Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 Regular City Council Meeting of June 25th, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arius.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and participating in the civic process. I think we have some students from Bakersfield College. Wave at us. Oh, a number. Welcome, Renegades. It's always good to have you here. We had the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Antonio Alfred, who's the pastor of St. John Missionary Baptist Church, to offer the invocation. St. John's, we just thank you. More than 80 years serving our community, and I know that you continue to emphasize grow, love, outreach, and win in your glow program, offering supportive services and wonderful fellowship, and thank you for your counseling services also that you provide. Following the invocation, Simmer Singh, who's going to be a junior at Stockdale High, will lead us in the pledge. Simmer is a finalist in the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair. Now, listen to the topic. Leveraging Natural Language Processing Techniques in Bidirectional Encoder Representations from Transformers for Detecting Bias and Toxicity in Journalism. Get it? Congratulations on that. She's the founder and CEO of Girls Got STEM. That brings awareness about gender issues in STEM field. She's a summer student researcher for engineering biomedical systems at Brown University. She's the lead organizer at Blue Zone Cooking and a 4.0 GPA honor student. She also is in varsity golf. And so, we are just delighted to have such strength of students and representation in our community. Would you all please stand? Pastor?
Ms. Powell. Father, we thank you for allowing us to have this time in these chambers. We invoke your presence now as the mayor of the city council and all these that have gathered here. Go through the agenda. May it be done decently and orderly. May you be pleased. May you lead God and direct us. We ask your blessings over this meeting and the entire city of Bakersfield. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Simmer.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Simmer, do you want to introduce your family? You're welcome to do so. You all may be seated.
So, today I'm here with my family, Dr. Singh, and my mother, Dr. Chatta, and my younger sister, Mayor.
Welcome and congratulations. We are very proud of you. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts a meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, and speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Keith Powell, Recreation Supervisor, Keith Howell, Parks Superintendent, and Darren Budak, Director of Recreation and Parks Department for the City of Bakersfield, declaring July 2025 as National Recreation and Parks Month in Bakersfield.
Coming up here, Recreation and Parks Team. Quality parks and recreation are cited as one of the top three reasons that businesses relocate right here in our community. And imagine no safe spaces for your families or for our youth to connect with nature. Our wonderful Recreation and Parks Department provides spaces for all those wonderful gatherings. 65 public parks, four public pools, 10 spray parks, two sports complexes, two skate parks, multiple pickleball and volleyball courts, and one large amphitheater. We are just so glad to be able to have them here from our team here today. Oh, there you are, our director, and it's my honor to issue this proclamation. Whereas recreation programs and parks are essential to communities across America, including the City of Bakersfield, and whereas parks and recreation are fundamental in establishing and maintaining our community's quality of life while contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community, and whereas recreation is invaluable to residents in providing positive alternatives for children and youth, especially during non-school hours, and whereas parks and green spaces remove pollution from the air, lower city temperatures, and aid in capturing and storing water. Now, therefore, I, Karen K. Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Recreation and Parks Month in our city, and urge all residents to enjoy the social, physical, mental, and environmental benefits derived from our city's parks, streetscapes, and programs. It's my honor to be able to present this to Darren Budak, who is our director, and if you'd like to introduce your team and offer some remarks. Darren?
So, I'll let Keith start. This is Keith Powell. He is our Recreation Supervisor down at MFP.
Thank you, Darren. First, I want to say thank you for the proclamation, and we appreciate all the support from the city, the city council, and all the community, and all the things that you guys do to make our parks fun, safe, and happy. Thank you.
And then, secondly, we have Keith Howell. As it says, it's Parks and Recreation, so I wanted to make sure both sides of the house are represented. So, Keith Howell.
So, first thing I want to just say is I am so honored to work for the best department with City of Bakersfield. So, and also just to let you know that all the men and women that work for our department, that we're not able to do all what we can and get things accomplished so the citizens of City of Bakersfield can experience, you know, the beauty of life and with all their families. So, I just want to give a shout out to them, and just also with the councils, just thank you. We've made a lot of progress the past couple of years.
Yeah. So, on behalf of the entire department, it's been an exciting couple of years with PSVS, and we've done a lot with the council and stuff. We're looking forward for the next couple of years. July, in particular, is a big month for us. It's a very important month in our department because it's our most active time of the year, as you can see on the things that we're doing, from bill-band concerts to movies in the parks to the spray parks. It's go-go-go for us. And so, it's a very special time, and being able to get up here and bring recognition to Parks and Recreation. Again, thank you to Mayor and City Council.
Public Statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are received at different times. Depending on the item, I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify as specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I'll call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers? Oh, I skipped a whole portion. No, we don't. Madam Clerk, do we have any, sorry, public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received 15 speaker cards for items not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. We have a lot of speakers, so I am going to just encourage you to be succinct, and the clerk will call you up, and just make sure that you adjust your microphone to your speaking level. Madam Clerk?
The first speaker is Larissa Mitchell-Reed.
My name is Larissa Mitchell-Reed, and I'm the founder and CEO of In the Black Business Services. Thanks to city funding and support, I've been able to grow my business from a one-woman operation into a thriving firm that now serves small businesses and real estate investors across the county, I mean, across the country. That funding helped me invest in team members, access to training, and move towards purchasing my very first commercial building right here in downtown Bakersfield. But beyond the dollars, the mentorship and technical assistance I've received through city-supported programs have been critical. It's one thing to have a vision, but having the guidance and resources to bring that vision to life takes it to a whole other level. I now pay it forward by working with dozens of entrepreneurs in this city, many of whom are just getting started and navigating their way out of generational poverty. I'm able to educate these entrepreneurs and help them understand their finances, staying compliant, and building sustainable businesses because of the assistance that I've had through the city. Continued support through grants, mentorship, and education doesn't just help businesses, it changes lives and communities. Please keep investing in us. We're not just building businesses, we're building Bakersfield's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell-Reed. Just a reminder to our audience, I know you're enthusiastic, but we don't allow applause during this portion of the meeting, but thank you. Next speaker, please.
Savannah Powell-Fry.
Good evening, Mayor Go, my councilmember Larry Coleman, and all of his city council and staff. My name is Savannah Frye. I am 10 years old, and I attend Old River Elementary School. I am the owner of Lollipopa, a brand that inspires girls ages 3 to 12 to use their imagination and believe in the world of possibilities. I started my business in 2019 and with funding from the City of Bakersfield and the B.C. Launchpad, and investments from the community members like Michael Bowers, Morgan Clayton, and Heidi Forsythe. I have been able to ship over 200 birthday boxes to little girls throughout the United States. We would have sent boxes to Canada, but the custom fees were too high. My business received funding under the City of Bakersfield Program for small businesses through the Launchpad, and because of the grant, I was able to publish a book with my birthday fest, and also attend the Las Vegas Licensing Expo as invender. This expo is the largest expo for the licensing industry. Because of my attendance there, I was able to find a manufacturer for my products and able to meet Jana Markle, Senior Vice President of Brand Central. She has connected me to Claire's Retail Store for product placement. Without the support of the City of Bakersfield, this connection would have never been possible. As a kid business, I hope that the city council will continue to support small businesses like mine so that we can serve our community and grow and provide more jobs for people here in Bakersfield. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Powell-Fry. And congratulations on your business. Next speaker, please.
Tamika Powell.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Go, councilmembers and city staff. My name is Tamika Powell, and I'd like to begin by thanking you for your continued support of small businesses. As a former president of the Kern County Black Chamber of Commerce, a professional expert with the Bakersfield College Launchpad with T. Johnson, and a small business owner myself, I've seen firsthand how the right funding and mentorship can completely shift a business's financial position and growth. Small businesses are an economic backbone, and when we succeed, the city sees the return through jobs, taxes, and vibrant neighborhoods. But the reality for many of startup businesses and small businesses right now is this: we're covering payroll, basic operational costs, and attempting to fuel growth using high-interest credit cards and high-interest loans. We're making it work, but it's not sustainable, and it's not smart business. City funding has provided and would continue to provide breathing room for these businesses so that they can not only reduce debt, but smartly reinvest in growth and actually build something scalable. It could be funding toward the purchase of needed equipment that would increase operational efficiencies, or even funding towards the down payment on the purchase of a new commercial space for business expansion. These small businesses have the potential to be employers, taxpayers, and significant contributors to our local economy, but without access to capital, mentorship, and technical assistance, possibly in the form of creating a basic business plan with well-thought-out financial projections, many of them are stuck in survival mode. So, I just want to end again thanking you for your continued support and ask that you consider your impact on small businesses when you adopt the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Next speaker, please.
Natasha Johnson.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Go and city councilmembers. Good evening. My name is Natasha Johnson, and I proudly serve as the Executive Director of Entrepreneurship and Workforce Development for Bakersfield College Launchpad. Since 2019, Launchpad has been committed to creating a connected ecosystem of resources and support to help local entrepreneurs start, grow, and sustain their businesses. In 2023, the Launchpad implemented the City of Bakersfield Entrepreneurship Grant Program in response to the economic impact of COVID-19. This program has provided critical technical assistance and funding opportunities to small businesses at every stage of their journey. In 2024, we were awarded additional funding to continue this great work. Since then, we have proudly served over 1,200 small businesses, awarded over 160 businesses, supported over 400 startups with less than two years in operation, and contributed to the creation of more than 350 quality jobs. In total, we have distributed over $1.3 million in grants directly reinvesting into our local economy. Today, I stand before you alongside many small business owners here in attendance to urge you to continue to support this vital work. This evening, you will hear from local small businesses who have greatly benefited from your support. We are incredibly grateful to councilmember Andre Gonzalez, City Manager Christian Clegg, Jenny Byers, Cecilia Grago, and the City Economics Development Team for their commitment in supporting small businesses. Supporting small businesses in Bakersfield isn't just about economics, it's about preserving the heart and the soul of our city. These entrepreneurs create jobs, drive innovation, and reflect the unique character of our neighborhoods. When we support them, we invest in a stronger and a more resilient Bakersfield for everyone. Thank you for your support and your time. I do have some data here for you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Zach Griffin.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Councilmember Go, and, excuse me, Mayor Go and councilmembers, staff, constituents. I am Zachary Griffin. I am here representing Kern's Cycling Coalition, as well as IBY Kern and Kern Active Transportation. I'm a local special education teacher, and it's been my summer vacation, so I apologize. Last month, there was a newspaper article in regards to a grand jury report that was issued from our grand jury, and it was in regards to whether or not we're addressing using our bike lanes and our active transportation infrastructure correctly. What I noted about the particular plan was, and maybe I'm just kind of messed up, my sister happens to be a doctor of marine biology, and she has about six papers out that have to be peer-reviewed before they make it to publication. And I was kind of amazed at the grand jury report because it seemed to be lacking in a lot of connectivity. They pointed out reductions in fatalities, therefore driving the question of why put money down for infrastructure. I think what they negated is that if we isolate just the cyclist, yeah, we've had a reduction of cycling behaviors or incidents or fatalities. However, when you put a bike lane in and extend a bump out for a crosswalk, you're not just affecting a cyclist, you're affecting active transportation users such as walkers. And many of us know on this board that pedestrian fatalities have been in the nature of 50, 55 per year. And I know I got a limited amount of time here, but, you know, just getting at a cost of what a human life is, is about $7.5 million, according to FEMA. And Kern County really suffers from a lethargic issue. We have about $108 million per year that we spend on obesity and obesity-related deaths. So, getting our constituents out of their cars, moving, and getting happier and healthier because we know that happier, healthier people are more productive, and they start wonderful businesses like we just got to here. So, with that, I want to thank the staff. I want to thank this board for continuing to progress active transportation in Kern County. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Next speaker, please.
Amato Verastegui.
Please introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Amato Verastegui, and I'm here to let you guys know how the city funding has helped my business grow. City funding has allowed me to purchase necessary equipment to support my business's quick growth. Without the city's support, I wouldn't have to incur in credit card debt, which is something as a small business owner I wanted to avoid. The continued support through programs like mentorships, grants, and technical assistance is essential. It is essential because hundreds of businesses start every year, but unfortunately, not everyone survive. With the city's continued support and mentorship to small businesses, you are helping increase the success rate for local businesses, which helps our local economy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Derek Aaron.
Thank you all for moving this along. I know we have a lot of speakers who have requested to speak tonight, so thank you for being so efficient in your comments. Welcome. Please introduce yourself. Can you raise the mic, too, please?
Hi, good evening. My name is Derek Aaron. I'm the owner of Foxville Lounge. I just want to say thank you, guys, for your continued support and the grants that you guys do offer for downtown businesses, and it has showed large growth over the past five years, and I hope to see that continue as the years go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. Next speaker, please.
Tracy and Nicholas Spencer.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Tracy Spencer, and this is my son, Nicholas Spencer. I'm here on behalf of Parkwood Apartments, Frank St. Clair. I've spoken to you before, the last time I was here, it's regarding the party hall that is across the street from my apartment complex. Basically, they have a party hall over there. I don't think that they are supposed to have the party hall. They party way into the night, between 12:00 and 2:00 AM in the morning. I've sent the police over there. They do not seem to be able to provide a cabaret license to the police when they do go over there. The owner is not doing anything to provide any kind of license to the police. He's just being very unruly, putting things on my Google reviews. I'm putting together a petition to close his business down, try to do something. You gave code enforcement some information to get ahold of me, Frank Torres. I heard from him one time and nothing else after that. The people at Parkwood, they do have a right, a Fair Housing Act right, to the enjoyment of their homes and get rest themselves, and it's not fair to them to have to do this, you know, go through this, you know, certainly every day, and then on the weekends, to be bashed with party mishaps. This last weekend, he had a party of over 100 motorcycles, and it took the Bakersfield Police, you know, six to eight cars to have to shut them down. And it was all in the parking lot, loud music. It was very unruly, just going in and out of the parking lot. It's just unfair to everybody, and I can't get any help here. So, I'm asking if somebody could help me out with this.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. City Manager Clegg, would we be able to have staff follow up with her?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll take the opportunity just to share, this issue was brought to our attention about a month ago, and we've done a number of sets of research about what has been the history at this site and location. We've initiated code enforcement and also police department review. These processes do take a little bit of time to fully hold accountable folks who may not be acting under the conditions that have been established for them, but what we can do as staff is provide a follow-up of what we've been doing in the last few weeks to be responsive to this request, and it is in the works.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Thank you, Ms. Spencer and Mr. Spencer.
Okay. Can I provide this to you?
Sure. You can just leave it right there, and we'll make sure that he gets it. Thank you.
And you'll have somebody follow up with the ma'am?
Yeah. City manager's office wall.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And we have more speakers than we have time for, so I'm just going to take the speakers that have already submitted their requests. Next speaker, please.
Maria Polite.
Before you start, I just want to make sure that those of you who have already submitted speaker cards but didn't write an item, if you're here to comment on the budget, that item will be addressed, and we'll take public speakers during that portion of the meeting, which is later in the meeting. So, if you're specifically talking about the budget, I think a couple of you there are going to talk about the budget. We'll move you to that part of the meeting. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Maria Polite, and I'm here to talk about the issue of trees. I have here a dialogue that was written after we had a chance to speak with the Kentucky Director of the article I presented to you on February 25th, I think it was. And so, I have these for staff. First of all, I just wanted to remind you that I had been here earlier and passed out an article from the Nature Conservancy Magazine, issue one of 2025. Since then, I've been lucky enough to participate in the Zoom, which is addressed in this article that my friend Eddie was able to put together. I'm here as a person who grew up in South Florida, where trees grew everywhere you turned around, and you climbed trees and read magazines, and just grew up that way, but how lucky I am to live in East Bakersfield, which is blessed with so many trees. I was driving down California Avenue this past week, and on the south side of California, this is past Bakersfield High, were homes with trees, but on the right side was a whole long stretch of empty land that could hold trees. And in the article that you received, what, and I thought, well, why don't we plant trees there? It's next to the railroad line. Maybe they could help, and maybe they would like the publicity for making the community greener, but really importantly, just as well is healthier. And what I want to remind you is that they have found that inflammation in us creates fertile ground for heart attacks and strokes. And one of the things that they learned in Louisville in this five-year study was that planting trees reduces inflammation in the people there.
Thank you. Ms. Polite, your time is up. Would you bring your comments to a close?
Oh, yes.
Have another sentence or two?
If you could, as a legacy for all of us, help us get more trees. I know you haven't stopped. I hear you're working on it and you're counting trees. I hear you're working on it and you're counting trees, but plant more trees. I really, we need it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Yeah. So good afternoon, everyone. So my name is Auntie Lauer. I'm a professor at CSUB in the Department of Biology and I'm also here to talk about trees and I brought some copies. So Bakersfield has developed a tree plan and I'm happy to declare that the Tree Advisory Group, that Darren Budak and his team who is here today is working really well. So we had three meetings and I have to say I enjoy working with Darren and his team and all the other community members that have, uh, started working on a tree plan, discussed certain issues. We want to have a tree policy that expands upon the trees that the city owns. So we want to educate the public because many people have in their gardens majestic trees and they might not take care of them properly. So there's a lot of benefits with having trees. With Mr. Griffin from Special Ed's mentioned it, that, uh, being in nature is healthy. And I also have what I distributed here, scientific evidence, there are several review papers published in, um, peer reviewed journals of credibility that prove beyond doubt that a green city promotes mental health and also physical health. So if the city wants to apply for grants to support these efforts with tree planting and everything, these reviews would be good to include in grant applications. Um, and then I have this just to show you, this is from the, um, climate report that NOAA just released last year. Um, the days in red, the, the bars in red are the days that exceed 100 degrees over time. So you see in 2024, last year, we had, and I have the numbers somewhere, 61 days that were above 100, uh, degrees, which is prognosed to increase in the future. So we have to do something. So working with the trees is one thing that is going well, but other things have to do, have to be done to curb the urban heat island effect.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Next speaker, please.
Sharon Brielle.
Hi, I'm Sharon Brielle and I'm a 24-year resident of Ward Five and a longtime advocate for urban tree preservation. I'm here today to express my deep concerns about the loss of three liquid amber and two valley oak trees located on Scarlet Oak Boulevard. And this is only a small sample of the problem that's systemic in Bakersfield. These trees were each approximately 40 years old and died due to overpriming and inadequate drought protection. These trees were not just ornamental, they were a living infrastructure providing critical services. How do we quantify the loss of these trees? It's estimated that they were worth 60 to $100,000 in lost value using a tree appraisal of standards. They may have provided over a thousand pounds of CO2 removed annually. They provided shade, um, that lowers, uh, housing, air conditioning costs, and of course the habitat for the animals. My concern is that the street is hotter, drier, dustier and noisier. People like me who are over 70 and little children are more vulnerable to heat-related, um, risks, um, and walking is very popular along this street. And our property values go down because frankly, it's just not very pretty to look at a bunch of dead trees. Um, I'd really like to see these trees replaced, but you can't replace 40 years. Um, I'm glad to say that our, um, parks department is starting a process of doing an inventory of our trees, which is critical to making sure that we're growing and not losing trees. And this recovery process needs to involve all the citizens, especially those areas that have less trees. Letting 40-year-old trees die is not good stewardship. It's short-sighted. I urge you to act now, not just to referral to staff with clear public facing forest re-infrvestion commitment. Sorry for the slur. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please, and we have a couple.
Eddie Lane.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
I'm Eddie Lane. I'm with the Sierra Club. I've been here longer than four of you have been alive. Um, I'm going to pass this one out for, primarily for Councilman Corman, who brought up the issue of number of trees in parks. And, uh, I'll just say we have, I think it was about 16 months ago that, uh, we brought before the council some of the inappropriate tree removal, uh, down at Truxton Lakes and Councilmember Smith was with us down there. I am pleased to, and you probably already know, but, uh, in the last few months, uh, we've had, um, 200 trees planted around Truxton Lakes. And that's real progress. So it's important we continue to, and we are, we're working really quite closely with, with, uh, Mr. Budak, I usually call him Darren and his staff, but, um, it's really important we keep the momentum going. You know, we've got to start, but we've got a long ways to go. Maybe we're on the 10-yard line, I don't know, but we've got a, we've got a good start. Anyway, uh, Councilman Corman, keep this, this is an example from Louisville. We, I don't think we want to have, um, a park that doesn't allow volleyball and soccer in, in Bakersfield, but even, even, even the parks are well-maintained, need more trees. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. We have run out of time, but I'm going to give time for the three speakers who have turned in their cards already, and I'll just ask you to be efficient in your speaking. Uh, next speaker, please.
Karen Urso.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Go, city council and city staff. I'm Karen Urso. I'm a registered nurse and I've lived in Bakersfield for almost 25 years. I've worked in public health and in community health nursing. I'm also going to speak about trees, but in relation to the unborn child and the pregnant mother. I've always known that pregnancy increases the risk of heat stress, but what I didn't know until recently, when I listened to a nursing webinar, is that it impacts the unborn child. I always thought that baby is insulated, um, in the womb and it is, but when our bodies overheat, blood is shunted from the core to the surface to cool the body. Thus we flush and have some sweating. And when that happens, oxygen is taken away from the blood flow to the placenta and that baby is oxygen deprived and studies have shown they're at risk of preterm birth, of small birth weight, and even of stillbirth. For, um, every day that a pregnant person is exposed to extreme heat, the rate of hospitalization increases by 5% in the second trimester and 3% in the third trimester. So this reminds me of a woman who was living in southeast Bakersfield and I did a home visit to her. She had a high-risk pregnancy and she had a child in kindergarten and one in third grade. She had to walk to school with them four times a day, round trip. I told her that's eight miles, that's a long way for you to walk because she lived 0.9 miles from the school, no busing, and she said, it's fine, the walking, but the problem is there is no shade between my house and the school and I get overheated, I sweat, I get dizzy, I can't drink water, and I fear I won't be getting home safely with my children. And she was right. She could have had heat stroke and left three children without their mother. So I wonder what we can do to improve this situation? Well, we know planting fast-growing shade trees can provide shade for people who are living in areas where there is not enough shade along the streets that they walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Urso. Next speaker, please.
Letitia Davila.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Letitia Davila and I'm co-owner of Central Valley Legal Document Assistance here in Bakersfield. Small businesses make up over 99% of Kern County's economy. Um, we're the ones who keep the city running and we're also the ones most impacted when funding is taken away. Um, the grant we received helped, but it wasn't just the money, it was the mentorship. We're here not just to support our families, but to support others. We reinvest, we create jobs, we help people access services they couldn't otherwise afford. We are trying to do right by this community. Please don't just check a box and walk away. Be, be accountable. Don't let this be a one and done effort. We deserve consistent, long-term support, not just handouts, but hands-on help that builds something real. Cutting this funding cuts into everything small business stands for, and it sends a message that the people trying to build a better life don't matter. We're asking you, stand with us, help us grow, help us stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davila.
My name is Glenda Braun. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Glenda Braun and I'm a legal document assistant. Uh, Letitia and I have a business together here in downtown. We are a woman-owned business serving families throughout Bakersfield. We represent 99%, we represent the 99% of small businesses that form the backbone in Kern County's economy. We are not just the business owners, we are neighbors, employers and contributors to the community's success. Thanks to the city's economic development programs, we were able to take important classes at the local college at no cost, classes I would have not had access to or the time otherwise. These opportunities equipped me with the skills and knowledge that helped us expand bilingual services and hire more local businesses to support our growth. This kind of support goes beyond funding. It's essential education and mentorship that turns potential into progress. Cutting these funds just isn't a budget decision, it's a setback for small business owners like me, who are working very hard every day to serve this community and create local jobs. One-time grants don't build lasting success. We need sustained investment and ongoing programs that empower us to keep going and giving back. We've proven the impact these resources can have. Now we ask for your continued partnership and commitment to the small businesses that make this city thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braun. Thank you, Ms. Davila. And to all of you small business owners, thank you so much. You are the ones who keep our economy going and we appreciate your service and your investment in our community. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I wanted to thank everyone that came to speak about the progress being made with, uh, the, the Rexon Park Department and our Tree Advisory Committee, um, as well as our her Urban Heat Island Effect, uh, committee. I, it, it's true that when, um, the referral and recommendation was made that came out of your advocacy, that it was not only the trees we work on, but how do we reduce the temperature overall in the city? And we look at cities that do such a great example of this, uh, from the cities that experience extreme heat to the cities that experience extreme cold. But since we're in the summer and it's pretty warm outside, I think this topic takes, uh, some immediate precedence. Um, and there are some realistic things that, one, planting a tree can reduce the temperature right under that tree up to 15 degrees in any neighborhood, um, Silver Spring, Maryland. You know, there's so many examples. You've, you've listed Louisville. Cities have done this well and I know that this committee, uh, will have a plan to, to look at that for our city of Bakersfield so that we can enjoy the outside, um, year-round. So I just wanted to thank you all for coming back today to remind us that good work is happening, but more work is, uh, is on the way, uh, as we reduce the heat island effect in, um, in Bakersfield. And Councilmember Pashir Tosh and I were just talking about how sometimes it feels like the heat coming down is just as hot as the heat rising from the sidewalk. That's exactly the heat island effect. So, um, thank you for your work, uh, we appreciate it and thank you for sharing with the residents of Bakersfield the progress being made.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We'll now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on items listed under Consent Calendar Item 7, your time to speak is now. Each speaker will be given a two-minute time limit and each agenda item is list, limited to 20 minutes total. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on Deferred Business Item 11A, now is not the time to speak. That's regarding the budget. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed under Consent Calendar Item 7?
Mayor Go, we have received two speaker cards for items on the agenda.
Thank you. Would you go ahead and call those speakers, please?
The first speaker is Zach Griffin, followed by Troy Hightower.
And before you start, Mr. Griffin, we'll just give our guests a time to, uh, to leave the chambers.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to make sure we can hear you.
I'm pretty loud. Thank you. Again, thank you, Mayor Go, council members, staff, constituents. Uh, so I was actually wanting to, I, you're, I'm always amazed at how many thousands of papers are in your documents, uh, and so you guys obviously do a lot of work just getting ready for these meetings. As I was going through, I had noticed 7G7, uh, which was a, I happened to ride 7G7, which was a class one bike path. It's hidden, uh, Ken Ware's, uh, supervisor, excuse me, council member Ware's ward. And so I was, I actually am in, in, I'm in congruence with, or I, I would recommend the purchase of said gate. What I was struggling with is that the wording from the, uh, assessment, I believe, in the assessment report, is that correct, Mr. Meyer, that there's an assessment report? So it states in here, and we're using funding that says we are connecting from, using the dump road from Fairfax to Palladino. That is not correct. It is not contiguous. There is a gap that has disappeared as a result of us allowing people to illegally ride motorcycles on the top of Ward Three's area that is above the Hart Park area, of which I've come before this board for many years to discuss. This has been an ongoing issue since COVID began. Uh, I've been riding my bike out there since 1979 and I have to say that, you know, on a larger issue, it's more cumbersome getting there. However, I love what you guys have done on the dump road, but as you crest over the dump road and you proceed towards Palladino, it is gone. It is gutted. So the idea, I rode it on my road bike. I'm a professional mountain biker, you know, I made it through, but to ask an eight or an 80-year-old to make that and to also say that we have done it, it could be legally binding. So that said, I would encourage maybe us to re-look at the area, see what we can do to get that on the dock so that somebody doesn't say, hey, you're not, you said you're using this to connect an area that is not connected. And I would hate to see us get stepped back for trying to do the right thing. Anyway, thank you very much. If there's any questions, feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Next speaker, please.
Troy Hightower.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Um, good evening, mayor, council members, staff. My name is Troy Hightower. I'm a local economic community development consultant here in town, and I'd like to make comments on Consent Agenda Item 7G8, Implementation of the Transformative Climate Communities Funding. As some of you may know, this is a project I've been involved with and support for a number of years. Both Councilmember Arius and Gonzalez have been good champions for this project. So my, my question and the comment I raise is on the administrative staff report for this item has a table that lists the projects expected to be appropriated from the state. So we're at the point of implementing the project and I think it's important that it's clear what we get from the state and what it's used for. However, the table lists not all of the projects. This project has about 10 or 12 projects, but the appropriation is in two parts, 17 million, which there's a table that lists the projects that's for and the amounts, but then there's another 3.6 million that has no such description of what it's used for or what projects. So my question is, or recommendation, is for staff to present a more detailed list that shows what's being authorized from the drawdown from the state, what projects they are and the budget amounts, because this is a big project from the time of the award back in December 2023. The projects have changed, the budgets have changed, which is understandable, but I think it should be clear what it is now, where actually, as we're drawing down the funds from the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. Thank you, Mr. Hightower. I've received a form from Councilmember Smith, asking to recuse himself. Councilmember Smith, would you make your announcement on that recusal, please?
Yes, I will abstain from Item 7D8 on the consent agenda. I will vote on everything else on the consent agenda. Part of my family is part of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Any other colleagues have received any requests for recusal or for items to be pulled? Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not wish to pull any items, but if I could just ask that staff, please respond to Mr. Hightower's question by way of email or in writing, so that we can get a good recap of what the progress is on TCC. It's certainly been a number of months since I've been engaged, so I think it'd be great to get a quick update on that progress.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Arias. Mayor and council, we're happy to do that. The amount that was listed in the administrative report is all the amounts that are within the Economic and Community Development Department. Those $3.6 million referenced are Public Works projects, which are in the original agreement, but we can clarify that and provide a status update.
Thank you. If there are no other items that need to be pulled for separate consideration, Vice Mayor, will you make a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent calendar with Councilmember Bob Smith abstaining from Item 7D8.
Thank you. You have a motion?
The motion is approved, with Councilmember Ware voting no.
Thank you. And I am going to make a little change right here. I failed to present a certificate earlier during the presentations portion, so I'm just going to ask Simmer to come back up. I know that Danielle gave you the certificate, but I want to just do an official presentation, Simmer, we are just so proud of you. And in celebration of your being named the 2025 finalist in the Behavioral and Social Sciences category for the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, this is presented in recognition of your award-winning project leveraging natural language processing techniques and bidirectional encoder representations from transformers for detecting bias and toxicity in journalism, and in recognition of your leadership and dedicated efforts to pursue excellence. Congratulations on your achievement. We are so proud of you, Simmer. Right up here.
This is a big deal. This is an international competition with teams from all over the world.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 11A, fiscal year 2025-26, city budget. Resolution approving and adopting the operating and capital improvement budgets. Resolution establishing the appropriations limit. Resolution approving and adopting the master fee schedule. A staff memorandum was received transmitting correspondence.
Thank you. Please note, if you're here to speak on deferred business item 11A, the city clerk will call for public statements after staff's presentation. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes, and there will be a 20-minute time limit for the report item. City manager, Clay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. I have a brief presentation to share with you, just providing an overview of our budget. This presentation reflects a high-level summary of the content, but I would just put things into context first. At your last meeting, we held a public hearing. That public hearing, the purpose of that public hearing is to listen to community feedback related to this topic, but it's actually tonight, with the resolutions that were read by the city clerk, is where the council adopts the budget, along with several of the other supporting documents, like our fee schedules and salary schedules and so forth. This is the culmination, though, of many months of workshops and conversations. We start the budget process typically in the fall through some of our internal projections, when we work on it as staff, and through the early part of the year. And then we work through the Public Safety and Vital Services tax in particular, has several sessions with our oversight committee. Typically happens in April. And then your council held two fairly lengthy workshops related to the budget during May. We had a budget report at the end of May to highlight the proposed recommended budget, and that's where we presented the, what we call the budget book, or the much more lengthy document that has lots of pages to that. And just this past week, we did post to our webpage -- excuse me, it was included in the agenda packet for the June 11th meeting, this long budget book. But then we also posted it to our front page on our website to make sure that it was available for the community to see what would be presented for adoption tonight. Also, before I begin my presentation, just want to reflect that there were some questions at the last council meeting and referrals by council, and we prepared a memorandum for your review related specifically to public safety and police costs and those increases, and that is available for additional review. But just wanted to highlight quickly that police budgets, like actually almost all of our departmental budgets, were up this year compared to last year because of principally inflationary drivers. We've seen our insurance costs, our workers' compensation costs, our equipment costs, our utility costs have all increased. And we knew about some costs that were going to be increasing in our personnel line items because of our memorandums of understanding with our labor partners and how compensation would be had. We have not increased staffing or programs in the police department, and with only two very small exceptions, we did not make any additions in this year's budget to any departments. Yet, we saw budgets go up principally because of those inflationary drivers. There's only one or two departments that actually saw a reduction, but that's because we had significant operating reductions in those budgets. With that, if, do we have the presentation ready? Not quite? Okay. What I'll highlight from this presentation as it's coming up is that the highlights I can speak to, then we'll have them briefly on the screen for the benefit of the public who may be watching. But this year, we have a balanced budget. We have aligned this budget with city council's strategic goals. It does reflect our current economic conditions. We've had to make some important reductions because we've seen these increases in costs. Also, we had, excuse me, some rebalancing or resetting of our -- thank you. We've seen a slight reset to our sales tax baseline because of some remittance errors. It's important to note, and I'm now on bullet four on the left of this slide, that we've focused on maintaining our essential services. But unfortunately, again, revenue growth has really lagged behind those inflationary impacts, and so we've had to make some of those operational reductions, and we've had fewer capital projects in this budget than before. We continue to use fairly conservative revenue estimates. We think that's the safe play and the safe bet. We have reserves set aside. We have not touched our reserves, and we have also made significant contingencies in this budget in the event that economic conditions are any worse than we have projected. When I noted some of those reductions, it's a total of $6 million in operating reductions to balance the budget. And as you know, we have implemented a hiring freeze, all vacant positions, which right now, we have about 150 vacant positions. They will be frozen for this first quarter of the fiscal year, so that we can ensure that we're generating enough savings to be protected against, again, economic change, as well as work towards some longer-term restructuring that we anticipate. But again, the good news is that we have a balanced budget that allows us to continue to make progress in the most important priorities identified by the city council. During this next year, we'll have to make some of those structural, long-term adjustments. But again, I think through some efficiencies and prioritization, we'll be able to do the most important work and identify those things that can adjust. It's important to note that public safety remains our top priority. Homelessness is also, we would consider, in that safety and resilience. And then we've got a lot of infrastructure projects scheduled for our capital improvement program, as we continue to catch up on some of those important road improvements in particular, as well as some important maintenance to our city facilities and city assets, so that we don't build up too much deferred maintenance. We have some projects that are in our urban core, as that was one of the priorities established by city council, and we're able to fund those. And we'll take a mid-year look at some of our capital projects, both those that we set as contingency, as well as if there's opportunities to do other capital projects when that time comes. The Public Safety and Vital Services tax continues to allow us to offer improved services than we've had historically. Those essential services remain fully funded. We continue to focus on being able to recruit and retain quality employees, and again, we continue to take a conservative approach to budgeting. With that, this is an overview of the total citywide budget. There's a small comparison there. You'll note that there's a fairly significant variance between last year's budget and this current proposed budget. That's largely because our capital improvement program is smaller, because we completed some very large infrastructure projects. Otherwise, the budget is, looks fairly similar to last year. This just gives a sense of our revenues, of where all of our revenues come from. Largest portions, of course, are our taxes and assessments, and then charges for service in particular, because we also have included our enterprise funds in this chart. As far as our expenditures, again, this is a breakdown that just gives a sense of operating versus capital. You'll note, again, that notable reduction in capital, and you'll note that the inflationary impacts in those operating expenses are visible through this slide as well. And then this just gives a better sense by department where our funding is, and I won't linger here too long, because we have this graph that just gives a sense of where we're allocating our resources, again, consistent and aligned with city council priorities. And I would submit also those priorities that we've heard from our community. With that overarching summary, I just would close by saying that we are committed to the values that we've established in collaborating and showing accountability, being resourceful, having excellent customer service, and being good stewards, and that Bakersfield cares to our community. And we look forward to making good things happen with these appropriations in the coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. And now, city clerk, would you please call for the public speakers?
The first speaker is Jeanette Beeson.
Just a reminder to all of you, please adjust the microphone to your level. We're eager to hear what you have to say. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Go and councilmembers and staff. My name's Jeanette Beeson, and as a businesswoman and senior citizen, I have concerns about enough fire and police protection in Bakersfield, and I don't want those services cut due to, there is a large population of seniors here in the valley, and so I'm excited about the budget as it now stands, the fact that you are prioritizing core services, and the fact that it's vital that we feel safe in our community here in Bakersfield, and that we have an understanding that we can be secure, we can be safe, because our police and fire are not cut in this issue, and you're doing as much as you can to conservatively look at these issues and look at the monies that are spent. And so I want to thank you for that. I also think of the security and safety of children as they go to the parks, as they go to school, how important it is to have these fire and police services for them, so that they do feel secure in this great golden empire. And I do think it's important that a community that grows needs to have vital services that encourage freedom and the caring heart that we have here in Bakersfield. It's one of the reasons I moved here four years ago. And so we're excited that you are maintaining this existing budget, and that you are ensuring a sense of safety, a sense of confidence, and a sense of stability. So I want to thank you for that, and for those that are in business and those that are seniors of taking that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Beeson. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. And colleagues, I see that our screens are being reset, so I think we just need a moment there. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Linda Willis, and I would like to speak in support of the proposed budget for 2025-26. I believe it addresses the needs and well-being of the community and its residents. The proposed budget offers the best use of taxpayer dollars. It allocates vital resources for the safety and security of neighborhoods, businesses, and common public areas. Investing in the city in this way creates a stronger, safer, and more livable city. It is without question that the funding of police and fire departments must come first before any other expense categories. The police and fire departments protect lives and property. The next category of importance for funding is the city's infrastructure. Residents and visitors rely on well-maintained roads, bridges, connectors, and thoroughfares, as well as sanitation services and sewers. These investments are critical for daily life and attracting future growth. The current proposed budget takes a responsible and balanced approach to managing city resources and addressing the highest and best use of local taxpayer dollars. It provides a balanced budget in light of California's increasing cost of living and unaffordability and misuse of the state's funds, as well as loss of revenue and residents. Bakersfield remains an area of California that thoughtfully spends tax dollars while adjusting for the higher costs of doing business in the state. Please vote yes on the passage of the presented budget.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Go and councilmembers. Dave Demowski, representing the Home Builders Association of Kern County. At your April 23rd meeting, we expressed some concerns about a number of double-digit increases in fees relating to planning and land development procedures. Since that time, I had an opportunity to meet with your staff on a couple of occasions, and they shared their calculations and assumptions. And I think we appreciate that opportunity to review the calculations, but we're also very appreciative of the commitment of the city to do some organizational changes with Public Works and Development Services that should help the process. Really, the, excuse me, the two things the city can do to help fix the housing crisis that are within your control is to speed up the process and to limit that are within your control is to speed up the process and to limit fees and exactions. So I'll conclude with that and also mention that we reiterated our support for your draft housing album. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Demowski. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, good evening. My name is Rosa and I'm a resident of Ward 2. And I know that you will be voting on to the city budget tonight. So I don't think that most of what you heard earlier, starting this meeting and at the public hearing a few weeks ago, will influence your decision. But I want to urge you to truly listen to the voices of the people who have elected you and are asking that you adopt a budget that prioritizes the root cause of social challenges like homelessness, poverty, and mental health. I also want you to reimagine how we've approached this budget process and invite the people in this process and vote because a true people's budget must include the people's voices. Tonight's vote is not the end of this important community item. It's time that we work as a community, and you work with community, to prioritize a budget that is rooted in equity, compassion, and true public safety. I'm asking you to reject the proposed budget, a budget that continues to disproportionately invest in policing and the criminalization of our communities under a disguise of public safety. We need real and lasting solutions. Year after year, you all turn to the police or we turn to the police to solve our deeply rooted social issues, and we know it's not working. I will not necessarily repeat the data that we've shared in the past, but our general funds, almost half of it goes to policing, far more than any other department that directly address the cause of mental health, poverty, and homelessness. We've allowed policing to become our default response to every crisis. And we've said this in every meeting. We call on the police because when we don't have, we don't know who else to call or what services are available to really assist families who are suffering. So I urge you to please reconsider and truly listen. And we cannot no longer, we can no longer just say that public safety means more police with guns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Harveen Kaur and I speak to you all tonight, not only as a lifelong resident of Bakersfield, but as a proud product of Eastside Bakersfield. Growing up, I often heard my peers speaking negatively about our hometown. Bakersfield's ghetto. The only thing to do in Bakersfield is smoke, drink, and eat. Well, while I never fully believed that, I'll admit, I internalized a lot of that. And I went to college, got out of town the second I could. I went to UC, I graduated from UC Irvine, and I considered staying there because a lot of people, my peers, don't want to come back here. And I had fallen into that, too. But it was none other than Vice Mayor Kaur who encouraged me to utilize all the knowledge and education that I had obtained at that university and bring it right back here, reinvesting into our communities that have poured so much into us. I went to Highland High School. I went to Chipman Junior High, Thorne Elementary. These are, this is my community. This is my home. And so despite me wanting to stay in Southern California, I was reminded that, okay, if I am aware and educated on policy, infrastructure, politics, social science, I had a duty to bring it home. And so I did. I worked as a community organizer and I've been advocating for equitable rights here for all constituents across Bakersfield. So with that, I know and I understand that many will detest Bakersfield or try to, for a lack of better words, hate on us. However, I would always and still continue to come to our defense. So it's not just a dusty pit stop off of the 99. We are so much more than that. We are a best community that is continuously growing. But when I see that 44% of our city budget is allocated to the police, it makes me wonder where our priorities are. So I urge you all to reject this proposal and hope that we can come to a more equitable, where we can actually have parks and schools that are well-funded, taken care of, and not a threat to children. And the schools are educated, are well-funded as well, and the students have resources. Because I love Bakersfield. I want it to be better. But the state average is 20% for most cities, not 44. 20%. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaur. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, good evening. Hi, my name is Samuel Batista. Today's meeting, I heard a lot of great things and witnessed a lot of great people growing and getting their businesses together and asking, you know, not to cut funding on things like that. And I think that that's really important. I also heard some arguments about how great this budget is for putting that money into policing and into the law enforcement. And I think that everybody has a really good point because a lot of those things really are needed. We need community. We need businesses growing. We need policing to keep us all safe. But the only problem is, is that we're not looking at the social issues that are happening and how we can truly get to the root of curing those social ills. I think that the budgeting should go more towards programs that will, will actually in return, cut crime, where we won't need as much police. If we're only giving 4% to growth and economics, then we're not really growing. I mean, 4%, that's, we're not going to grow very far with that. If we put more money into the economics and the development, then we can put more, we will be able to grow bigger. Our budgets will grow bigger. There'll be more money to pass around and we'll be a better Bakersfield. Not that we're not great already. We are, but we can be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Batista. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Alrighty. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. My name is Valerie. I'm a part of Ward 1. I'm also delegate for 8035. I just want to give a big shout out to Samir Singh, first and foremost. That's a really big accomplishment. So if you're still in here, congrats. We want to see many more Samir Sings, right? We want to see Bakersfield be known as that hidden gem. I know Harveen went to UC Irvine, I went to UCLA, and I'm just, I'm sure, you know, Ms. Singh is going to go far in her academic journey. And I want to see more youth go far in their journey, right? They come back, as Harveen, as myself did, and, you know, we make Bakersfield better. So we have to, you know, we have to look past the revenue, the budgets of right now and look towards the future, right? Investing into the future. And so I just want to give a big shout out to all the folks who have met with me and the coalition that I'm a part of, the Criminal Justice Coalition. And so I won't call you guys out, but you know who you are. Thank you so much. And I also want to give a big thank you to Christian Clegg. I met up with Robert today, great guy. And he told us about all the improvements that are coming up. So much transparency is being brought up and it's something that's so refreshing. And I'm just, I really want to take this time. I already know which way the vote's going to go, so I'm not even going to go there. But I do want to make it very clear, right, that a lot of folks, they've brought up so many great ideas, right? More environmental benefits, you know, healthcare. I mean, you hear everything, right? And so I know that there are certain cuts that are going to have to be made, but it's up to you guys, right? It's up to all of you together. I know, you know, I'm part of Ward 1, but I deeply care for Ward 1 as I do with Ward 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Because this is Baker, so this is home for, you know, my siblings and the clients that I work with at a paralegal firm that I work with. And so I think when it comes to things like this with budget, we should not look at this as a partisan thing, but a nonpartisan, you know, item. And so I just really invite all of you to meet one-on-one with the Criminal Justice Coalition. And thank you so much for your time. I know my time's up.
Thank you, Ms. Pinto. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Sandra C.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Castañón. I'm an AIDM delegate for District 35. I wanted to express my opposition to the proposed city budget, which allocates 44% to the police department. I've spoken with community members across our city who share the same concerns. We want our taxpayer dollars to reflect our actual needs, needs like affordable housing, public transportation, recreational programs, and improved infrastructure. If the conversation is truly about crime and safety, increasing BPD's budget is not the solution. A larger police presence does not address the root causes of crime, nor does it make residents feel safe. What does work? Investment in our communities, recreational facilities, art programs, and youth sports have proven to reduce crime by offering positive and meaningful outlets and opportunities, especially for young people. We deserve a budget that invests in people, not just policing. Please vote no on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castañón. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mary Madlin. I have a company here in town. And I was a little, the comments that were just made are a little concerning to me. I had a brother, number one, that was mentally ill. And here's my, you know, number one, the way some of this major in has been spent with the Hunter Police that we're supposed to get. And then even with attrition, I mean, it's difficult to keep up. But what I've seen, just being on the major in committee and the people that were on it who would listen and change their mind about, you know, coming in solid on a vote, they were going to, you know, totally go partisan or whatever, it's wonderful. But my brother was mentally ill. And what I see, have seen is with our homeless problem, which a lot of the major in money should go towards with the police and training, give them more money and the, and the fire department. And, you know, the small business that's affected by homeless, you know, the windows and things like that. You know, tax dollars almost doubled with what we started with. And kind of the, the highlights of that bill, because I didn't read the whole thing, I just voted on it, are certainly not what was represented. And that's, you know, contention with a lot of people, well, you should have read the rest of it. Well, I don't think I didn't. And then also with the city, you know, the cost of increasing staff in any department. I just went through a thing at my company where I brought someone in. We went from 115 to 73, I think. We're doing a better job, more efficient. Believe me, I did, I did not believe it, but I'm much better because of it. But it's not bringing in someone who's involved in urban planning or different issues, you know. Look at it as a business and make your cuts. And it's just amazing to see what happened in my company, and I see it every day. Those people all found jobs. I'm pretty ADD, so I'm liable to be in Christmas and Thanksgiving at the same time.
Ms. Madlin, your time is up. If you want to bring your comments to a close, please.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Madlin. Madam Clerk, next speaker. We have three speakers who would like to speak still, and this will, we'll finish up with these three speakers, please. Mr. Lane. Welcome.
Eddie Lane, I'm not representing the Sierra Club. I just want to make a comment because I'm, I'm good friends with some people on the, on the committee here who, who Rosa Lopez is working with. Process is important. And it's important that as you move ahead, I'm thinking next year, to be have really open-ended process, have a lot of dialogue with all sectors of the community so that all voices get heard. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Anna Huerta, A-N-A-H-U-E-R-T-A. Good evening, council members. I'm here as a lifelong resident of Bakersfield. I was born and raised here. This is my home and I'm proud of it. But we can do better. When I was growing up, there really was nothing to do but get into trouble. And I see a lot of that continuing forward in our communities with the lack of recreational centers, as was shared, you know, a lack of green spaces. Our parks are improperly funded. We want to enjoy those green spaces and be outside in low-income communities. And it's hard because they're trashed and the bathrooms are dirty, right? I want, I have a dog. I don't have kids. I have a dog. I want better dog parks. I want to be able to walk my dog downtown. All the trees were removed. Why? It's hot, right? We have a homeless population that is being obscenely policed and it's not solving anything. It's not getting to the root cause. We need additional resources for mental health treatment, inpatient treatment, affordable housing. All of these things can address the root causes and create a better, shinier, glittery, right? More friendly Bakersfield that we're proud of and want to enjoy. And so I urge you today to vote no on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Robert Hooks. So I was here for the last meeting and heard all the comments. And it pretty much appears that you guys really didn't change anything. And it's a little bit disheartening. And I saw a nice presentation that says you guys are going to prioritize homelessness, yet it looked like your economic and community development budget was reduced by $5 million. No one's asking to defund the police or be soft on crime, right? It's really where are you going to find the money? And you guys can be creative and do better, like Anna just said. It's not likely that you guys are going to change anything tonight from anything comments that are said, even though I don't support the budget that you guys have put together. But I think really what that gentleman was just saying is probably what we need to do is be more transparent earlier. I heard you guys say that you guys started this process in the fall. And I personally was just hearing about things in the last few weeks or so. There are some creative solutions, right, that can solve some of these problems a lot better. You guys have, excuse me, openings in the police department and other positions, which you guys say 150. Apparently, we're doing an okay job without those people, so maybe that money could be used somewhere else. I know in corporate America, you use it or you lose it, right? And it's unheard of to have open positions out there lingering for long periods of time. So I don't support not reallocating funds. I don't support you guys not listening, but let's try to do better next year.
Thank you, Mr. Hooks. And I believe that's the final speaker for this section. To all of you who spoke, thank you so much for your engagement in the civic process. And we just invite you to continue speaking during public comment throughout the year. And now I'll go to my colleagues for comment and action. Madam Clerk, do we have the speaker requests up? Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank Ms. Valerie Pinto and Ms. Tiffany James, who is also here, for spending an hour and a half with me this afternoon. Myself and Robert, our budget officer. We were able to go into detail with some particular questions and concerns and delve into the budget and also talk about the process. And I just really appreciate your commitment and the time that you spent today. I know you're very busy and it takes a lot to take time out of work and other things to come down to City Hall. But it was very productive. And I think that it speaks to what was commented just a moment ago by Mr. Lane and some things that I shared at the last council meeting, that it is worth us improving our budget process where we build in lots of time and opportunities for community members to come to this council and for us to go to them, to go to various different neighborhoods and hear from the community directly and also have these conversations about several things that are of concern for the community and also some of the things that we're actually doing. And so I'm going to make a referral tonight, doubling down on the referral I made last, last council meeting, that we continue to pursue a more inclusive budgeting process and schedule in the upcoming, in the next fiscal year and also as we look at the mid-year. There is another question, because the last speaker, I want to just gently challenge your notion that we didn't hear you. I do hear you. I do hear you. I know many of the colleagues up here, we do hear you, and we hear many of the advocates, and we've been working really hard to try to figure out ways in which we can respond to the concerns in a real way in this budget. And part of it is that we're going to adopt a budget tonight, but it's not completely done. We have a mid-year session where we will consider the budget revisions. We will look at, in January, how we're actually performing in terms of revenue. A lot of these things in the budget are simple projections. We don't know what the economy has in store for us. We will have a better understanding of how we're doing with regard to sales tax in January. And so we want to give ourselves some room and opportunity to take the time to see where we are financially before we make additional line items and move forward. And so that's where the mid-year process is really important. In fact, we have a number of contingency items on the agenda, on the budget tonight that are sort of in abeyance until we know how well we're doing financially. And Mr. Clay, can you describe to us what we've done there? And I think it's really important for the community to understand how we're thinking about the budget in this very difficult economic future that we're about to experience.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez, Mayor and Council. We've done this over a couple of budget cycles now at this point, but we identified several capital improvement projects that don't have to happen in the first half of the year. In fact, technically don't have to happen even in this coming fiscal year, whereas there were some projects we identified that were very important to move forward with. And those projects will get evaluated at mid-year after we've had two quarters, that we've been able to see how our revenues are tracking, whether we've achieved some of our savings goals, because our budget does include a goal to achieve additional $4 million in savings through the hiring freeze. And that will allow us to either move forward with those projects if the funding is available or that we could postpone those projects. We've actually done that. Two years ago, we postponed several CIP projects because our revenue projections started to show that a slight decline despite having pretty conservative revenue projections, and we didn't move forward with those projects. And that balanced our budget and actually, you know, created some savings going into the coming budget cycle. In addition to that, we'd just point out quickly that your city council has set aside what we consider rainy day reserves, and we're one of the few large cities in California who meets the two-month working cash reserve as recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. And so we have those reserves in place. And then your council also identified what we've called this year as a capital improvement project reserve. We have $2.5 million, it's actually a little more than $2.5 million, we made one small adjustment there, and I'm not recalling the precise number, but it's close to $3 million that is not allocated to a specific CIP project that allows us that if we have a road project, important road project, or a road repair that was unbudgeted, allows us the ability to move forward and make that fix or that repair with this CIP reserve that we'll also evaluate, you know, at mid-year.
Okay. One of the comments that we heard during our public hearing was with, was in regard to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we have seen a reduction in the number of dollars we're allocating in this upcoming fiscal year for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is a project that I've been very excited about when we first started it after the passage of Measure N. It has helped us produce hundreds of affordable housing units. And, you know, lots of folks, rightfully so, brought up the issue of getting to the root cause of homelessness, and fundamentally, it's about housing. And by producing more affordable units, we're able to get to that root cause. And so I'm proud of the trust fund and what we've been able to do. It is a concern to see the reduction. And so what I'd like to do tonight is make a referral as we consider the mid-year budget for staff to come back to council with a report and a plan on how to best set ourselves up to get those matching dollars available from the state of California for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and to come back with a proposed appropriation so that we can maximize that match. And hopefully, we can do that sooner than later and really get that fund much more healthy and plump so that we can continue to build more affordable housing units. But thank you all so much for being part of this process and spending your time, and looking forward to working with you as we look towards mid-year and the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just also wanted to thank everyone from the community for being here to speak and frankly, for holding us accountable and for bringing our voices here. I liked what one of our community members shared, that we're not going to grow very far from that. And I really liked your phrasing of that because it's true, where we invest our money speaks to the priorities of this council as well as our city. And to Eddie Lane's point, process is important. Process is everything. Process is the discipline. And just as we did at our last city council meeting, which was our first budget presentation, I made the suggestion that we move our budget workshops to the libraries that we support alongside with the county. That is a significant and important investment that the city made in our local library systems. So my ask today is that, also, City Manager Clay, could you share with us when the mid-year budget is, when that process begins, and when we adopt a mid-year budget by?
Yeah, I think, Vice Mayor, we typically, we call it mid-year, but it's not right at the six-month mark because that happens and land right in the holidays. So typically, we start those conversations in January, and so then by the council meetings in February, we make any adjustments to the mid-year.
Okay. So can you name months so that we can share that with the public as to when?
Yeah, again, and we don't typically do mid-year conversations prior to the end of the calendar year. So it's in January, we'll have deliberation, and then in February, we'll take action.
Okay. So I'd like for us to have community meetings about our budgeting process, both at the mid-year budget as well as for our next fiscal year budget, but for those to take place in the community so that we can give those presentations to the community and welcome them into that conversation and so that we can also hear feedback at both budgeting times. And for our fiscal year budget meetings that will happen next year, they start in the fall. Are we going to have, I know we've had conversations within, with different folks within our budget department that we're going to be, are we going to be beginning earlier? Are we changing the timeline with how we approach the next fiscal year budget?
Yeah, thanks, Vice Mayor. So, Mayor and Council, we typically start with, and this is getting a little bit into some of the technical pieces, but our salary projections take quite a long time, but there are things that we can forecast. And we also have what we call our internal service funds. That's how we pay for our technology equipment rates, our vehicle equipment rates, our insurance, our other risk funds, workers' compensation, is what I was trying to remember. So we typically do those in the fall, and that's not something that we've historically, you know, had a lot of engagement around because it's kind of a baseline. And then as we look at the operating, that's really where the rubber meets the road. That's typically started in January internally of each year, and then by March, we're able to start having some of those conversations with city council. And then April typically is with our oversight committee, and then through March, April, May, those are the most engaging times that we typically have. We are trying to start some of our process a little bit earlier this fall, but I would respectfully recommend that it's, that's probably still even too early to start an engagement process because we don't have enough to share yet with the community of where we're at. But I think as we get into the new calendar year, that's really the time where we're starting, you know, I think we focus a little bit on mid-year first. And then as we get through mid-year, that's the right time to start doing some of these. And if I could, just, I would recommend, we probably consider, think of them as maybe town halls at the ward level. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we have full council meetings out in our wards, but allow ward council members to hold these community engagement opportunities to share budget information and to hear from the community. I think that's something we can facilitate as staff readily in the wards with award council members to gather that feedback. And then I would also suggest that as we do our strategic planning exercises typically in each spring as a council, those are good times to be informed with both basics around the budget and then some of the community feedback that comes around the budget. So I would suggest in that March, April timeframe, and those are good months when we're still well ahead of final decisions on the budget to be able to do some of that engagement.
Thank you. So I think that's a great suggestion as well, having ward-level budget workshops where we're putting post-its on the wall and we're having a collective conversation as to what community, city council members can bring forward as like the district-level priorities and where we can actually move forward. So March, April, May, so kind of in the springtime, we'll remind everyone again that this will be the time to engage, but I do like this new structuring where we can be in the community talking about something as important as the city budget with constituents. And we'll be sure to remind you and send out reminders via social media and build that in as well. But I agree, I think we have, we can do better as well. You know, this was a uniquely tough budget year for all cities all around, for the state. We're feeling it on the national level as well. Some of our neighboring cities are in a deficit for the most part, and so to be in a balanced budget now is something that is worth noting. But there is more room to grow. You know, we haven't built a new fire department station in 15 years. Our call volume has doubled for our fire department in that much time, if not more. And in 15 years, Bakersfield's population has also grown tremendously. In 2010, the last time the station was built, our population was closer to 350,000. Today, in 2025, our population nears 400,000 and over. 419,000, thank you, Mayor. And it was probably lower than that in 2010 as well. But we can do better to keep our communities safer in different ways, and these ideas have, you know, must be adopted, included, and they come from the community. We can keep our community safer in different ways as well. For example, crime prevention through environmental design or CPTED, which, this isn't just happening in progressive cities or in just the big metropolitans like Seattle and Boston. This is happening in Youngstown, Ohio, where vacant lots were turned into green spaces, and they were able to radically reduce the percentage of crimes. It's happening in Fort Wayne, Indiana, where just street lighting was added in particular parts of a neighborhood, and that reduced 53% of crime in that targeted area. It's happening in Fairfield, California. And we just, we have to be better as well locally, and we can, we can be better. And I'm hopeful that the mid-year, as well as with the next fiscal round, we can, and with strong community advocates, whether it's working on how our residents are healthy. I appreciate the woman who came, who was a medical provider and talked about, you know, the in-home visits she did as a care provider for a pregnant woman, who shared that shade is what was keeping her from being able to walk her children to school and stay healthy, not necessarily the walking. And those things fundamentally change the quality of life for residents here in our city. So I am committed to making sure that we find ways to incorporate your all's feedback from heat island effect to new and innovative ways in reducing crime and promoting safety within our neighborhoods, to building out parks. Trust me, it hits close to home. There's a park that has been waiting 18 years to be built in my ward, and we're finally getting to it, but in phases because they are very expensive to build. So I appreciate our departments that provided more transparency and more to come, and your feedback is what allows for us to build new systems. So I just thank you for participating.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I would, I don't really like our budget, to be honest. Not for any of the reasons that have been mentioned this evening. I support our fire department and police department and their budget. I think that something has changed in Bakersfield over the last decade and that we've become a government, a city government, that is trying to be a jack-of-all-trades instead of mastering the basic levels of infrastructure that our city survives off of. Taxpayers deserve to have a city that they can conduct and do business well with. And we've been slightly conservative with our budget, and we say that it's balanced based on projections of revenues, but being the guy that sends the tax checks to the city revenues, I can tell you that it is going to be much bleaker than what has been proposed. And business will, businesses are down, and it's gonna, I mean, I wish I could fix it. I wish I could say I had a remedy, but there's a lot of variables that are attributing to the loss of income across the board, and I don't think that we've been conservative enough. I think that we need to get back to focusing on essential business or essential services as a community. And I think that over the last decade, we've made this correlation with the city or the city budget, and we're confusing it with nonprofits, and now nonprofits, you know, act in our community. And I think a lot of the concerns that people are passionate about would be, would be and should be tackled from the nonprofit standpoints. We have hundreds of temples and churches and mosques and organizations in our town that probably have millions of dollars in savings accounts that should go toward these things that need, our city needs and people find passionate about. But we see streets falling apart, we see walls falling apart, we talk about water, we talk about sewage, we talk about safety. I mean, as a business owner on the council, I would say that, you know, the number-one reason someone would open up a business in an area is if they thought they could, A, make money in that area and B, not waste a lot of money fixing up and dealing with public safety for crime, homelessness, vandalism, stuff that business owners deal with every month in our community and are tired of because we're wasting a lot of money fixing things that we shouldn't have to fix. And so I think it's very important to note that the nondiscretionary increases are going to come, continue to rise. The inflation is going to continue to rise, and using reserves or fund balances to balance our budget isn't, in my opinion, as a businessman, a true balanced budget. I think we're setting ourselves up for a very bleak future. I mean, reading, you know, the article about LA yesterday and them having to probably cut 600 jobs in their city because their budget is out of whack, and I'm just like, we can learn so much from history. Look at where we are now and 20 years ago, do we deal with the same problems now that we did 20 years ago? Have things changed, gotten worse or better? What changed? Did federal or state institutions close down, and now crime is rampant because there's no accountability? Well, I mean, we can get emotional and put our feelings into this, or we can just look at facts and numbers and say, we have to make a better decision for people that pay taxes in our community. And I don't think this budget delivers what our taxpayers are entitled to, a clean, well put-together and focused city where they can continue to invest in our community. I'd love to see philanthropy increase. I've been talking about that since I've been elected, but most philanthropists have kind of gone away from supporting things, and now we're supporting things like cleaning up and holding individuals accountable and resourcing millions of dollars. And I don't, I don't like how, I don't like our budget. I don't think it's conservative enough. I don't think that we've made the necessary cuts. We've frozen positions. Those positions are going to be active at some point in time, which is going to lead to our nondiscretionary increases increasing even more once they are active and live, and we're going to continue to try and be a jack-of-all-trades while the city just implodes on itself, our budget implodes on itself, the infrastructure doesn't get addressed or handled. I like, I mean, there's facts and there's feelings, and I'd like to focus on the facts, and I think that we have gotten away from that. And I think that at some point in time, we have to, before it's too late, before we have some... have some, some financial crises that we're in the face with, I'd rather respond before it's a huge issue instead of being backed into a corner and having to make some, some knee-jerk reactions because we didn't plan accordingly for our future, for our kids' future, for their kids' future as a city. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bashir Tash. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. A few points and comments that I want to make tonight. I want to acknowledge the fact, and I think Councilmember Gonzalez was the first one to bring it up, which was that we need to take a look at cities throughout the rest of the state of California right now in this current economic crisis. The city of Los Angeles is hundreds of millions of dollars in a deficit, a fiscal deficit. The same thing with the city of San Francisco, the city of San Diego, the city of Sacramento, and so many others. And while those cities are facing those structural economic challenges, we are right here on the verge of passing a healthy budget that does not make any cuts or impacts to staff and personnel. It does not tap into our current fiscal reserves and really prepares for a sustainable future for the city of Bakersfield. And I think that that's an important part that we must acknowledge, that it is our fiscal responsibility to make sure that there is a way for us to see another day here in the city of Bakersfield. And so I think that, that the cuts that we are making and the hiring freezes that we are making are preemptive and proactive to ensure that in the future, in mid-year and the next fiscal year, that we can make significant investments once again into not just the bare bones minimum, but to actually get ahead once again on some of the deferred maintenance in our parks. We have nine undeveloped parks in the city of Bakersfield. We have a huge need for additional police and fire stations throughout the entire city of Bakersfield, primarily in South Bakersfield. We have a number of roads that we need to catch up on deferred maintenance with and so many other infrastructure needs. But I, I think now is a good inflection point for us to take this moment very seriously and save where we can and while also preparing ourselves for the future. A couple of additional thoughts. I agree with my colleagues that we absolutely need to do a better job on creating an open and transparent budgeting process. And I'll, I'll admit some level of frustration that even the first year that I came on the council, that, that there were cries out here in these chambers calling for an open and transparent budgeting process. And I think that we've gotten perhaps distracted or bogged down with other needs and projects. But I appreciate the city manager's commitment to making good on that promise and creating a easy-to-follow, transparent budgeting process where community is not only involved and engaged, but really educated on some of the challenges that we're facing as a city and really educated on where the funding's coming from and how the funding is spent. So I appreciate that commitment. The, the second thing that I really want to talk about is how, how do we define public safety as a community, right? What, what does that look like, right? Is it just the number of police officers on the streets? Is it just, you know, the, the number of, you know, violent crimes that are committed on the streets? Or is it like one of our citizens who came at the last meeting, who talked about, you know, the lack of violence? And how do we measure that in our community? Or is it the health of our families, the health of our residents and their ability to live safe lives and healthy lives and go on to graduate from, you know, UC Irvine and UCLA and come back and invest in their community? And I think that that's an important conversation that we need to have as, as a, as a city, as a, as a community, because I, I don't think that our current definition is working. That, that's my honest opinion. I don't think that it's just the number of police officers that are on our streets and the number of crimes that they're able to respond to. I also don't think it's the number of guns that we're able to remove from homes in our community. I think it's so much more than that. And I think that we really need to reflect more on that and, and broaden the scope of how we define public safety here in our community. I, I think of a number of investments that we've made over the years that includes, you know, behavioral health clinicians and our 911 dispatch that we continue to, you know, see, make huge progress in our community in keeping folks who are in a mental health crisis safe by not having them be met with, you know, an individual with a gun from BPD, but rather someone who is trained and specializes in being able to deal with those crises. I, I think of, you know, some of our park rangers. There was early conversations about equipping our park rangers with weapons and firearms and that, that has not come to fruition and I'm so grateful because instead of, you know, you know, brandishing a weapon, they de-escalate with their words and their care and their love for community in our parks. You know, I think of, you know, the investments that we've made in our libraries and the thousands, the tens of thousands of families who now are able to enjoy, you know, reading with their parents and their loved ones in those public spaces and, you know, our investments in our parks. There, there's such a laundry list, but when I think about public safety, I think about that. And I think that it's time that we really broaden that scope, broaden that definition so that we can better understand and evaluate just how safe our community is here in the city of Bakersfield. With that, I'll just echo my colleague's sentiment that we, we really do need to do better. I think this, this budget is really about making sure that we're committing to, committing real dollars to the needs of the current day and the present day. Unfortunately, we wish that there was more that we could do to catch up on a lot of the deferred maintenance that we have been working through, that has built up over several decades, frankly, and is going to continue to take time for us to chip away at. But I look forward to the mid-year and into the next fiscal years, we take some of these fiscally responsible cuts, that we engage community, we listen to each other and really figure out how we can do not just more intervention, not just more enforcement, but really dig deep and do a lot more prevention work to create a more safer public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. So for me, I've been on the council for six months now and it's been a kind of a learning experience, learning how this budget works and how this city works. And one of my frustrations has been how slow the government works. And I want, I want to kind of make a point that we have to learn, government has to learn to move at the speed of life. And that requires us not to delay planning for sustainability. We had a conversation in a previous council meeting regarding PSVS and Councilmember Gonzalez very eloquently laid out, you know, the things that PS, they've done with PSVS dollars that improved public safety. And that's all fine, but the question becomes whether that's, that's going to be sustainable in the future. And I think we owe it to the residents and to the employees of the city to ensure that the organization is positioned for the future. And that's to be structurally sound, service-oriented, oriented and adaptable. And I, I think we really need to work on that, that element of those three things. This is my first city budget and I had, I had some experience with budgets prior to coming here and I'm glad I did because it would have really been an uphill battle. But I really had to do some additional studying to really understand the budget and the structure and that kind of thing. So I wanted to share a couple of my likes and dislikes with the budget, budgeting process and, and how we come out. In terms of likes, I, I like how much the city does. And, you know, the more you get into it, the more you find out. I just learned, I guess I knew it, but it kind of got driven home yesterday at a committee meeting, you know, that the city spends almost $4 million a year just picking up stuff people dump in the streets. And we have a whole group of people that that's what their job is. And it, it, that's not all city employees, using some vendors and that kind of thing. But my point was that there's so much the city does. I, I liked how available the staff was to answer questions and how they, how they understand the budget in great detail. And so they're not just throwing something out there that they haven't lived with for a while. And I did like the department budget presentations. I liked hearing from the department heads about how they're, how they see things for next year. What I didn't like is, and this may be because I was a new council member, but I didn't like how late the council was to see the budget. You know, it was well into the spring before we really had an opportunity, at least I had an opportunity to have any input to. There was a lot of going on with staff was doing, but my involvement was very limited And my other comment, what I didn't like was the rigidity of the budget. It seemed so fixed by time that it was presented to us. This is the budget. There it is. And we, there was, there was input, but it didn't seem that much changed as a result of the input. And I'd like to be more engaged than the next time to try to influence that. And the last part was the lack of constructive public input. You know, we didn't get the, the public input that we maybe could have during those budget presentations. But I'm, I'm kind of thinking that, that public input needs to be before the budget presentations by the department heads so that it reflects the things that the people have, have talked about. And we're not going to be able to do everything for everybody. I get that. But I'm, I'm wondering if that shouldn't be flipped over. So, so where do I stand on this? I think it's important to remember that the budget is first and foremost a forecasting tool. It's not, it's not a financial document, you know, where we're committed to things. It's a, it's no, there's no financial commitment associated with it. It's just a forecasting tool. And, but I think that what this forecasting tool is saying is that there's a storm coming that, that we need to listen to. I think it's essential that we begin to position the city for long-term fiscal stability. And I, I do intend to support this budget tonight, but, and that's mainly because we have some charter requirements to pass a budget. Refusing to adopt this budget would be counterproductive and disruptive to essential city services. And we don't have an alternate budget to adopt, so we're kind of in a pickle on that. However, adopting this budget without some corrective action going forward, I think would be irresponsible and miss an opportunity to address emergency, emerging concerns. Councilmember Bashir Tash kind of pointed out some of those things that, you know, sales and businesses are down and we might not see the money that we think we're going to have. And so I think we need to look harder. You know, we say the budget is balanced and Councilmember Arias touted that, you know, we're one of the few cities that could say that. But the budget depends materially on the use of fund balance to close that operating gap. And this is an acceptable accounting principle for emergencies and short-term budget shortfalls. But the city has been doing this as far back as I could find. They've been carrying this over and it's not a good accounting practice. You know, we've talked recently about maybe having to do some bonds or something to be able to do some of our infrastructure projects. And with carrying over these fund balances is going to be a little bit of a black eye when those underwriters look at what kind of rates we get and how credible we are. And so I think it's important that we start addressing that. Many of our contracts have cost of living accelerators built into them. A lot of our labor agreements have accelerators that they're in, that they get so much more. But our revenues don't necessarily grow correspondingly. And so we really need to be more careful. Revenues have been relatively flat for the last few years while our expenses have grown and, and they continue to grow. And I guess the point to everybody is there is no extra money. And at some point, we're going to have to make some hard choices about what's important and what we're going to, what we're going to continue to pay for. And what is needed is clear operational and fiscal discipline. We're going to have to really get to those issues. We can't keep spending, keep outspending our revenues. We just can't. So I, I, I don't know. I struggle with this because I was, I was recommended that I make some of this as a referral, but I, and this is not an offense to the city manager, but, you know, I hear so many referrals sent and, you know, there's a scramble to write stuff down over on that side of the room. But yet I, I see so much, so little of it come back, you know, in actual real things. And so I was, I'm struggling with whether some of this stuff should be a referral or a motion when we go to approve or go to vote on the budget. But, you know, my, my recommendation is that the city, and I don't know if I should just make this referral now, or we can have some more discussion about it. But for me, what I'd like to see us do is this staff come back within the next 30 days or so with a concrete plan on how to phase out our reliance on fund balance for structural balance, or fund balance for structural balance over the next three years. It is not possible for us to cut out $46 million out of our budget to eliminate now. That's not practical, but we have to stop that reliance on it. We also have to stop our reliance on fund transfers and vacancies. This one-time vacancies and fund transfers, this is well-recognized in the accounting industry as a warning sign for cities that face fiscal instability. And we need to really focus on those things. We need to develop a policy for, for council discussion on how to utilize fund balance in the future. And I'd like to see that relatively shortly. But one of the things that I, I wanted to make sure that we do is that not wait till mid-year to know how we're doing, that we have some kind of report by the, you know, the first quarter to show how we're doing compared to our budget and, you know, where we're short, where we might have some areas that we're flushing. And then I'd like to see a council-led And then I'd like to see a council-led operational review of all departments and units with staff support and input to identify some of these opportunities that we could have to shift some of our activities into self-supporting enterprises, activities or services that can be responsibly eliminated or transferred to local vendors or somehow otherwise done. Look for opportunities to increase revenues and align with community priorities. And the staffing adjustments or consolidations that improve those efficiencies. And when I say staff involvement, I'm talking about, you know, worker-level staff involvement, because the people that know best what is we're doing and what can be done better are the people that are out there doing it. And so I'd like that to be part of the staff thing. And then the last item would have to do with balance transfers and transfers, and that's a very complicated thing, and it's not real clear. And I'd like to have some comprehensible reconciliation. I know that the finance department sent me, you know, their transfer, but I'd like to have a little bit more detail to that. But also with an education component, so the council can really understand that and understand the use of that. So I don't know, I guess I just said all that. So I guess that's a referral. So I can give you the written text if you like, but I would like to see some response to that. So I think that's all I really have to say. I could keep talking in circles, but I'm probably going to support this budget, but I don't love this budget. And I think we need to get to work on fixing the budget and getting that financial stability. So that will be the end of my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. For us to have the sound of Something Better that we all want for ourselves, for our families, and for our community, we do have to have that operational and fiscal discipline and seek how we can better increase our revenues. Thank you all for your participation here tonight, and we receive your input. Vice Mayor, motion please.
Motion to adopt the fiscal year 2025-2026 city budget.
You have a motion?
Vice Mayor, could you also please include all of the resolutions within the agenda, the resolution for the appropriations, as well as the resolution adopting the master fee schedule?
Yes. Which, okay, motion to approve the fiscal year 2025-2026 city budget, including the resolution approving and adopting the operating and capital improvement budgets for the city of Bakersfield for fiscal year 2526, the resolution establishing the city of Bakersfield appropriations limit for fiscal year 2526, and the resolution approving and adopting the master fee schedule for the city of Bakersfield for the fiscal year 2025-2026.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You have a motion?
I'd like to amend that motion, please.
Councilmember Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to amend that to delay CIPs till mid-year.
Councilmember, if I may just clarify, are you suggesting all capital improvement projects or the contingent capital improvement projects?
I'm suggesting that all CIP be delayed till mid-year, till we know we have the money.
Just procedurally, Mayor, as you know, Councilmember Coleman, with that amendment, that has to be approved by the Vice Mayor. If it's not approved by the Vice Mayor, then we'll take, if you want to make another motion, you can make a separate motion. If the Mayor accepts it, so be it. If the Mayor doesn't accept it, then we could have two motions on the table.
Two motions, she'd like two motions.
We'll do two motions.
Two motions. And so Councilmember Coleman will take the second motion first. If you could restate, so we're clear, what your motion is.
My motion is to delay all CIP until mid-year.
So you have a motion? And Councilmember Smith, would you like to comment? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I am not in favor of delaying all CIP projects until mid-year. We talked about fixing the fire station. We've got a number of things that we have on there that we realistically have money for, and to blanket postpone that and not keep the city moving with what we believe we can keep moving, I am not for. I, you know, since I got the speaker here. The city is doing great things. Crime is down, traffic fatalities are down. We've got real progress on homelessness. BLNC is serving people, and lives have been changed. We've made substantial improvements on the parks. As you mentioned, the trash in the streets have been cleaned up. The city is doing great work and will continue to do great work. And the sky is always falling. Four years ago, when, when interest rates started going up, Bruce Freeman sat right there and said, you know, we're headed for a big recession. And it didn't happen. Yes, there are financial problems, and yes, we make adjustments for them with the best information that we have. And so I'm for the budget as presented. Thank you.
Okay, so, you don't want to? So we are now going to vote on Councilmember Coleman's motion. Oh, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Sorry, Mayor.
I'm having problems right now with technology. I don't see the screen. Okay. Yeah, go ahead and cancel everything. We'll start again.
So the first motion we take is the last motion made. So Councilmember Coleman's motion is before us right now. I too am opposed to that motion. We have a number of CIP projects that are grant-funded by the state and by the federal government. We have obligations to see those projects come to fruition, to make a blanket statement that we want to pause all CIPs at the last moment. I don't think is a responsible move for this council, and so I cannot support that motion tonight. And I do want to concur with Councilmember Smith. He makes a great point. We have been making progress in this city. It, you know, the point of time came out last week, and it shows that in metro Bakersfield, the number of unsheltered people on our streets has dropped by 10 and 1/2 percent. There are more people who, in metro Bakersfield, who are in shelters now than who are unsheltered, who are on the street. That's a step forward, and that's because of our investments. That's because of this city's investment in things like the Brundage Lane Navigation Center, which is a shelter for 300 individuals. They are close to actually permanent housing, up to almost 500 people. So there's lots of progress being made in this city, and I think that we need to kind of, after this budget is adopted, go back and review all of the things that we're doing throughout the city and revisit the metrics. Because I think all of us as a community need to be reminded of the investments that we're making and the gains that we're making. And yes, we have more work to do. Yes, we're not perfect. But we will continue to work hard, and we have to have this can-do spirit as a city. That's what Bakersfield is built on. And I reject the skies falling. We know that harder times are coming ahead, but we will get through them. And we will be a stronger city and a better city longer term because we have smart people at City Hall, we have smart people on this dais, and we're going to get through it. But I have to reject your motion, Councilmember Coleman.
Is everybody able to see their screens at this point? For voting, go ahead and, yeah. So we're voting right now on Councilmember Coleman's motion. We always take the second motion first. So his motion, do you want to restate it, Councilmember? No, they cleared it because there was some confusion there.
My motion was to defer all CIP till mid-year.
You have a motion? Please cast your vote.
The motion fails with Vice Mayor Corr, Councilmembers Arias, Gonzalez, Smith, and Basheertash voting no.
Thank you. And so now we will vote on Vice Mayor's motion, which is what you read earlier, and that includes the resolutions. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Councilmembers Weir and Basheertash voting no.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, is that a new sign-in that's left? Colleagues, do any of you wish to speak? Councilmember Basheertash.
I would like to make a referral back to staff that we could revisit our EOA and adjust the policy that surrounds it and how it's done in our city. I'm still currently waiting on information that I requested for this two months ago in regards to the total spent in each of the districts and how much is allocated to that. I got a map of the districts and some of the information, but I'd like to set up an opportunity for us to revisit that and make some changes that would benefit our entire community and all the taxpayers.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, I did not have this pulled up, but I just wanted to respond to a constituent inquiry. Ms. Delgado is in the crowd tonight, and so I just wanted to be responsive to a comment that you made at the last meeting. I've received additional calls for service just behind the property at 3502 Hale Street, area code 93307. The, the challenge with illegal dumping is far beyond what Lauren's teams at Open Door Network can handle. It is going to require a, a large dedicated effort and team from city staff and potentially additional partners to go back there and clean up the existing illegal dumping. But I'm hoping that we can leverage the existing resources that we have on staff to be able to clean it up, but also potentially take a look at, you know, some of the, you know, technology that we've invested in with BPD to really catch these bad actors while they're in the act of dumping illegally. It's just detrimental to our community. Unfortunately, southeast Bakersfield is, is, I feel is the number one for a lot of these challenges. And so I just want to make that referral tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, our meeting stands adjourned at 7:37. Thank you all for participating.